Welcome to the May 11th. Concord Zoning Board of Appeals. Meeting. Couple of things, my name is Taylor Kinnaman, I'll be. Chairing tonight. We have with me. As well, and this is for the role called Ravi Fayya.
President.
And Thomas Swain.
Yes.
And myself, there Kinnaman's present as well, I appreciate everybody. Keep their. Cameras off phones and. Voice muted until the item that you are here for comes up, if you're a member of public, please raise your hand if you want to be. Acknowledged during the public comment period of each item. First item for tonight. Is Concord Center of the Visual Arts for a special permit, the site plan review. This item has been as requested, a continuous without just continuance, without discussion to the June 8th meeting at seven o'clock, I believe Haley, right?
Yes, seven o'clock.
I moved to the application of Concord Center for the Visual Arts for a special permit. On the various zoning by law sections at 37 Lexington Road to the June 8th meeting at seven o'clock.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Fayya.
I.
Mrs. Swain.
Yes.
And Chair votes I as well. That conclude. That item. Seven oh three, we have a couple of minutes, do we want to? Wait, or do we want to do minutes?
Think we can do minutes.
Yeah. Any, anybody have any comments on the minutes, minutes of February 9th, we start off with. Anybody had any comments or any edits to the minutes?
I think those were good.
Those are good, Thomas is.
Yes, I'm okay.
Thomas is okay, good, minutes of. March the 23rd. Anybody, any edits, any comments?
I think those are good too.
I'm okay.
Okay, I have no comments on those either, so do I get a motion to approve the minutes of both of these hearings?
Sure, I'm moved to approve the minutes of February 9th and March 23rd.
Can I get a second? All in favor, Ms. Fayya.
Yes.
Mr. Swain.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Minutes are 7:05 yet, but not right 7:05 yet.
I have 7:05 on mine.
Yep, now I have 7:05 on mine. Next item will be Lloyd and Sharon Leonard Price for renewal of a special permit. For a special home occupation at 152 Holdenwood Road, anybody here for the applicant to speak?
Hi, I'm Richard Lane, I'm here representing Prices.
Good. Would you like to be prepared to explain why this year tonight?
So the Prices already have an existing special permit for home occupation use, but it is set to expire this year and therefore they wanted to renew that special permit.
Okay. And as a board, any, any questions?
Are there any changes? Yeah, are there any changes in the use, the number of? Visitors, the number of cars, or is it the same as in the past?
So their psychiatrists and before COVID, they were typically meeting with their clients. Excuse me. At the property with the rise of COVID, there's been greater use of using. Zoom for the purpose of seeing their patients, but if in the future they decide to resume in-house. Visits with the patients that want to have the right to do so, otherwise there's been no change in terms of. Any of the conditions relative to the prior. Issuements in 2018.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Fayya? Any questions?
For another five year renewal here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Any, I want to Paul, Mr. Creedon. Are there any issues that you know of that have been reported to?
To you or to the town? Haven't heard any complaints or any issues.
Well, thank you. Now I'll open it up for public comment now, if anybody wishes to speak. Please raise your hand. No, I'm not seeing anybody. I'll close the public comment. Section of this hearing. Any discussion by the board?
I have no comment.
Relatively straightforward here, no comment. No issues reported to the, to the town, to Paul, so.
Yeah, I see no issues.
Okay, anybody wants to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the application of Lloyd and Sharon Leonard Price for renewal of a special permit under by law sections 5.3, 6.2, and 11.6 for a special home occupation at. 152 Holdenwood Road with the same conditions as were in the previous permit for another five years.
You got a second?
A second.
And all in favor, Ms. Fayya?
Yes.
The Swain.
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well. So congratulations, since you booked another five years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Better wait one minute, but. Haley, your clock seems faster, so if you hit seven ten.
I don't think it's quite caught up with yours yet.
If you hit seven ten, then let me know.
Yep, we'll do.
We'll do it nicely by the minute here. Way too efficient tonight. Okay, I have seven ten, next item on agenda, Boynton Brennan Builders LLC for a special permit. Or and the amendment for a special permit that was issued in April 13. 2021. An extension of a non-conforming side yard setback of 5.3 feet. This is, this is at 155 Monument Street, anybody here to speak? For the applicant?
Hello, Richard Lane, I'm here representing the applicant Boynton Brennan Builders, I believe Mark Brennan, a principal of Boynton Brennan Builders is also. In attendance of the meeting and Ben Nickerson, architect relative to the project is also in attendance. We're before the board this evening seeking a modification. In reality, a clarification with respect to the special permit that was issued by the board in April 21st, 2021. The narrative attached to this evening's application lays out the reasons why a modification decision is needed. I hope if you had the opportunity to review the application, the narrative and the plans and elevation submitted with the application. The issue relates to the setbacks approved. By the board in the board's 2021 decision, the decision granted a special permit for the proposed addition. And non-conforming setbacks and provided that it was subject to certain. Certain. Reference plans, the decision as provided in part, the prior additions of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit an as-built certified plot plan to the building inspection division demonstrating that the structure meets the requirements of the special permit. And Massachusetts Building Code, but also note that all the setback measurements shall be taken from the lot lines to the closest point of the structure, including overhangs. Copies of the reference plans are filed with applications should be including the materials, the site plan with four plans S dash. 1.0 dated March 3rd, 2021, where Ramsey Gourd, our architects. Do not indicate any roof. Overhang, the site plan entitled. Number 155 Monument Street plot plan dated April 5th, 2021. Indicate the existing structure and existing roof overhangs and the proposed wall lines of the proposed addition, but not the proposed roof overhangs. The elevations. Plans A dash 2.1 through A dash 2.4. Dated March 3rd, 2021, show a 38 inch. Roof overhang along the south side elevation across the porch and the new front porch. On the front elevation. This, as noted in the application, matches the existing overhang of the main roof. Also filed with the application is a large portion of the rear west elevation scale showing. The 38 inch overhang on the approved elevations. Additionally, at the rest of the building inspector corrected proposed east elevation has been prepared and filed to more accurately show same post-construction. Please note that the decision does not specify a minimum setback distance, only that it meets the requirements of the special permit. The actual setback distance has to be derived from the location of the existing building walls and the walls of the addition with the roof overhangs indicated on the elevations. The building permit planned dated May 24th, 2022 was revised to indicate the derived roof overhangs, not the existing roof overhangs. A copy of that plan was filed with the application and shows. You know, where it would encroach or increase the. The non-conforming setback for that boundary. In summary, the applicant is not seeing further relief from the setbacks, just more of a clarification as it related to the plans that had already previously been approved by. The board in the 2021 special permit. Mark Brennan, Ben Nickerson, and myself would be happy to. Answer any questions.
So I'm trying to just simplify here what you, what you were. Explaining here. We issued a. Special permit. On dimensions that just showed the walls and while there was also a. Elevations that showed a roof overhang. And that, that roof overhang was not depicted on the site plan, but there was, there was an existing roof overhang at that point in time. Which should have been depicted on the site line and that should have, we should have given the special permit. If you would have given it, we should have given it on that roof overhang dimension to the property line, is that correct?
Right, the plans, I believe, at least in terms of the site plans show, would show just the. Setback relative to the walls. For the addition and didn't include. The setback measuring it to the overhang. That would have been, that was indicated on the elevation plans, but was not.
Yeah, and, and that overhang was existing, right? And.
On other portions, I believe, of the property, the 38 inch. Overhang already existed.
But did it exist in this, in this setback?
On the elevation plans, it did, it didn't, the site plan didn't show.
Okay, yep. And the proposed elevation or the existing elevations is, in other words.
That were approved in the 2021. I believe with the, with the scale that was shown on elevation plans.
Yes, so, so this is what's, what's here, and if you can zoom in, so there was an overhang on that existing addition, right, and you're just now going to be continuing that overhang.
Correct.
Mr. Nickerson, if you want to jump in. Then. That'd be my guess, you're, you're the owner, right? Or not.
Nickerson is the architect.
Oh, sorry, the architect, you're muted, but if you want to jump in and explain.
Yes, the. The. The initial decision, the site plan indicated. An addition and then it indicated the existing roof overhang at that time. The plans. Included in increasing. The hip roof. And. That, of course, made the roof line come closer to the lot line. So once the, the new addition to the roof was constructed. It was. It ended up to be about five feet from the, from the lot line. In the initial decision, there was no indication of. A dimension for that roof overhang, it was just referenced that. So at this point, we have a dimension and. At the behest of the building commissioner, we've come back to the board to get clarification that that is in fact. What was intended in the, in the original decision.
Good, and thank you. And then there was mention of an as-built plan, that's just actually the existing plan, right, or is there, has this been constructed already?
This has been constructed. And there is a plan that shows. The setback to the now-existent roof. And I believe that that's one of these plans that. That is up. Yeah, right here, it's labeled proposed roof, but that's. And there may be one that's labeled as built. Here's one right here, new roof corner under construction, so you can see that. The little L-shaped brackets there indicate the edges of the roof. And it's, at the worst case, it's 5.3 feet from the lot line.
Okay. Thank you, so far, no other question at this moment from me, any other, any question from other board members?
No, I'm fine with it.
Ms. Fayya, Ravi?
No questions.
No questions, okay, if no, no questions, I. Open it up for public comments, if anybody, anybody of the public wants to speak on the item, please raise your hand. Being none, I'll close this portion of the. This hearing, no. Did anybody, has anybody talked with, goes back to Mr. Lane, Mr. Nickerson, has anybody talked to the neighbor on that side? Any conversations with them?
Not that I'm aware of, although Mark Brennan may be able to. He's the builder, may be able to add to that. Thought he was on.
He's finding his on mute button. Go ahead, Mr. Brennan. Yeah.
Yes, no, I have not spoken with the neighbor.
Okay, okay, but it is, it has been constructed, right?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, do you have any, any comments on this?
I do, do not, Theo, I mean, they did the right thing, they, they realized the, the. The confusion and they stopped construction and, 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 and came towards right away, it was, it was. Mark picked up this mistake, so I don't, I don't have any issues.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ravi, Thomas, any discussion on your.
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. I'm fine as well, it's a clarification, it's been constructed, I haven't heard any complaints, so I, I could entertain a motion.
Okay, I would move that the application of Boynton Brennan Builders Inc. for a special permit. For property at 155 Monument Street. To indicate a. Addition of the roof. Lengths at 5.3. Be granted.
A second.
All those in favor, Mr. Swain?
Yes.
Ms. Fayya?
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well, thank you so much. Good luck, and, and thank, thank you for picking this up and coming, coming back to us, appreciate that. Seven, 7:15, Moratori for. Tori, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, for a special permit to construct a second story addition over the existing non-conforming structure at 50 Fairhaven Road. Anybody to speak for the applicant?
Hi, my name's Brent Torrey, this is Moratori, the applicant, I'm her husband. And so we live, we've lived in this house for 16 years, love this house, love the neighborhood. Right now, we live on the third floor and our plan is to build a bedroom in this second story on the second floor so we can be at the same level with our kids. And to also add a bonus room above our garage as our kids are getting bigger and we have a fieldstone foundation which we can't really finish to give them more room. So in terms of the, the ask here, 50 Fairhaven Road is a single-family residence in Residence B. We're asking for a special permit on the side setback, the house is currently non-conforming on the side setback, the closest point is 4.4 feet. And the project is at a second story over the existing area that is non-conforming. The new closest point will also be 4.4 feet and the project also entails removing the existing detached garage, building a new two-car garage with a bonus room above. And this new garage will be attached to the main house with a single-story structure. All this work is within allowable setbacks and the current portico is non-conforming to the front some setback, but this is not changing. The lot is non-conforming in both area and frontage, the current frontage is 100 feet and 125 feet is required. Residence B requires a lot square footage to be 20,000 square feet and this lot is 11,004 square feet. The allowable FAR for this lot is 3,841 square feet and the maximum square footage allowed with it without a special permit is 3,948 square feet. The proposed square footage of, of this plan is 3,780 square feet and is below both of these requirements.
Okay, thank you. And are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, so when I look at the bylaw. We can grant relief from the 15-foot height limit. In that side yard exception area, we have to find that there are no reasonable alternatives available. And that the desire belief may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood. You know, typically when we do, because there's no reasonable alternatives analysis, it's helpful for the applicant to kind of walk us through. You know, how you came to this design. You know, and is, was there an alternative to be able to add the massing somewhere within the setbacks and why did it end up on that portion of the house? If you could just kind of give us a little more information on that process.
Yeah, so if, there may be a better view of this in. Yes, in profile view, so the addition on the, on the second story you can see is setback here slightly where that top right window is. This is the only area where we were able to add a room onto the second floor, again with it being where our children are. The existing area below is existing in a one-story structure. So that was what, unfortunately, our architect was not available this evening to join us and provide a more articulate answer. This is, this is. Basically what, what we were dealing with, if we were to add in above the first story. Edition that you see spanning the garage in the main house, we would have, have had to walk through one of the children's bedroom, which we don't plan to disturb in order to get to the additional bedroom.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay. Tom, you have any question?
No, I'm, no, I'm comfortable with this, thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up for. Public comment. Anybody in attendance that wants to speak, please raise your hand. Being none, I do want to note that there were several letters from a butters. Letter from Dom and Rice, Inten and Angar, all in favor of this. So thank, thank you for that, so I want to make sure that, that gets noted. In this. Any, any discussion on this for the board?
I agree with Tom, I'm good with this, you know, there's already, that, that height is already there inside the setback and it's just kind of being extended a bit and. You know, the back corner of the lot where it's not going to. Really be noticeable, I think. And I think as the applicant said, you know, the, the purpose of the addition couldn't really be accomplished by putting that space somewhere else. So, you know, I, I think there's, there's no detriment to the neighborhood here, that's clear and. I think we have enough to, to find no reasonable alternatives as well, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I do think also that the, the architecture unifies the design. Of this all, so that it.
Yeah, it makes you some of the same structure.
Right, 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 so. So it's, that's my, so I, I agree with you both that. This is a, an approvable. Project, so that said, can I get a motion?
You want to do this one, Ravi?
Sure, I moved to approve the application of Moratori for a special permit under zoning by law section 7.1.5, 11.6 to construct a second story addition over the existing non-conforming structure with a setback of 4.4 feet at 50 Fairhaven Road with standard conditions.
Second.
All of the favor, Ms. Fayya?
Yes.
Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well, thank you so much and good luck.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Take care. Okay, moving on, 7:30, Millbrook Terry Condominium Association for renewal of a special permit. For the use of second floor for classes and functions at 77 Lowell Road. Is there anybody here to speak?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Please, please state your name, address, and give us a brief explanation on.
Sure, my name is Jim White, my address is 175 Sudbury Road in Concord. And we're here, I'm here to ask that this board extend, I guess, for the. Second time a permit to use the second floor of the market. second time a permit to use the second floor of the market for functions. The original permit approving the construction of Concord Market did not allow use of the second floor. But it turned out people wanted to use it for functions like some office meetings and stuff. And so we asked for the board to amend the condition which prohibited use to allow these types of events. And the board did. The first amendment was only for a period of one year because everybody wanted to see what happened with parking and so forth. After that year was about to expire, we came in and asked for an extension again. Which the board granted for three years. And I'm here tonight, pardon me, to ask for what I hope we would get to begin with a five-year extension from when it now expires a little later this year.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. White. Any questions from the board?
I I have none. It seems to be fairly straightforward.
Yeah, I think if we could just hear from Paul if there have been any complaints about noise or parking. That's all we need to know.
No, no, Robin, we have had had no no complaints or issues with with that with the market, yeah.
Okay. I want to open it up for a public comment here. Anybody in the public who wish to speak on this, please raise your hand. Being none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. Any discussion on this? I remember I need the continuations that we did before. So I am, I am, I'm fine with this and I'm finally going to five years. Let me know what what you all think.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
You all agree? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the application of Millbrook Terry condominium associates, Inc. under section eleven point six of the zoning bylaw for property at seventy-seven Lowell Road that the existing special permit issued for one year be issued for a five-year term.
And assuming assuming that's that's with the same conditions as in the original special permit, right? Second, second by Ms. Fia. All in favor, Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
Ms. Fia?
Yes.
Here votes yes as well. Congratulations. See you in five years.
Well, thank you all very much.
Take care. Bye.
Bye.
Good, good. Moving right along, at seven seven twenty-five, almost been up here with on your agenda. We're cleaning up or the continuing a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with the trustees for the renewal of a special permit for out to hold outdoor large events for over fifty people at two sixty-nine Monument Street. Who's here to speak for the applicant?
I'm here, Michael Busak from the trustees.
Welcome. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, like you said, a continuation from the last meeting. I think we had some crosswires with our submitted narrative portion of it. But this is a renewal for our, we have two special permits at the old man's. One is for events under fifty, which was approved last meeting for a five-year cycle, which we had applied for three years. We had also previously applied for this, the events over fifty for a one-year cycle for the last three years. For this application, we had applied for three years, kind of deviating from the past because we've kind of have been coming with the same application each year and having the same results and feel like we've been improving to be sticking to our word with that. So we had asked at the last meeting a three-year extension of the special permit and and we adjusted our narrative from previous applications where we had laid out specific large events. The trouble that we've been having in the past is post-COVID, we have laid out these specific large events and most of them have not happened. And some of those specific events do not happen in that form anymore. So the permit itself became sort of limiting. So what the new narrative lays out is just limiting the amount of large events and then giving some deep description to what those events would look like. I think in the last meeting, this group brought up wanting to try to sync the two permits together so that they would both be on a five-year cycle, but I think someone also brought up hesitancy to do that because we want to see how parking works out with Rev two fifty, which I think makes a lot of sense. So yeah, that's the bulk of it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that update. We we were in a very good discussion last time, and I think I need this was a continuation for Lodge five, just to clean up some of the paperwork, right?
Theo, I do have one question.
Yeah.
And Haley may be able to help here, but it appears to me that in the application they filed, they indicated they would not be using portable outdoor toilets.
Right.
One of the, one of the conditions in the prior permits, I believe, allows you under item eight of a prior permit did allow you to have outdoor toilets. So I just point out to Haley that if we approve of this, that while we want the standard conditions that I assume would have been granted in the prior permits, we'd want them here again, but we want to be clear that we do not include permission for the outdoor portable toilets.
Understood.
Okay. With that, I have no problem with this.
Yeah, I I guess, you know, Tom, in the in the previous special permit, we did say public restroom facilities shall be available for use and/or a sufficient number of portable toilets shall be provided. I guess because the facility has a public restroom, it's sort of moved, but
We actually
I would have known.
Just clarifying, we do we do not have a public restroom. So typically for all of our events, we refer people to the the national parks comfort stations. And part of this agreement too, you'll see in the narrative too, if we we have these large events, we have only parking for about twenty spots. So it's conditioned on us being able to get parking granted by the National Park Service and we would work with them directly too, to make sure that access to comfort stations are available as well. We didn't receive feedback about the desire to not have portable toilets in the future.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you.
Okay. Robbie, did you have anything else?
No, I think you know, there's sufficient kind of specificity around what the you know, want to call them floating events would be and I think that approach makes sense so that there's a little more flexibility to to plan better instead of having to lock everything in months and months in advance, so.
Yeah, yeah, given given the the schedule of this meeting, this this board and then the advertising requirements, it's not very agile. That said, I would like to open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Not seeing anyone, so I will close the public comment section of this hearing. Is there any discussion between the members of the board?
I have no further comments.
Same 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 here. It's pretty straightforward. It's just it's a nice clarification there since last since last time. So with that said, I would like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the application of the trustees for renewal of a special permit under sections four, three, one, four, three, four, five, four, five, and eleven, six of zoning by law to hold large outdoor events over fifty people at two sixty-nine Monument Street. With the same conditions, however, as modified to reflect the eyes narrative of the the planned events. Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Fia?
Yes.
Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
And chair votes yes as well. Motion passion. Thanks for being here again and being patient with us and good luck with the events.
Thank you. Hope to see you soon.
Well, not 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 in this setting though. That's why we gave just three years. There was one other administrative business, which was the election of offices, but I think we decided since none of the Elizabeths are here. I'm not sure we do whether we can do that. Especially our current chair Elizabeth, it goes it goes more. So I think that will be continued to the next meeting and that will be on June eighth with a it looks like a pretty good agenda right there and then. Anybody have anything else here? Other comments? Haley? Want to chime in with anything?
Uh, no, although I don't know if you need to take a vote to move it, but for the sake of procedure, would you guys mind taking a vote to to move that to the next meeting?
I'll take a motion.
I move to
Go ahead, go ahead, Rod. Go ahead.
Move to the continue the election of officers to the administrative portion of our June eighth meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Ms. Fia? Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
Here votes yes. That item is continued. If there's more, we'll be chair for at least one more hearing.
I've lost you, so.
Did you lose me as well, Robbie or?
Oh, I can hear you.
I can hear you as well.
Okay, okay.
Rose, so maybe he
Yeah, Thomas's Thomas's connection has been a little in and out. Is there anything else that we need to discuss? Anybody else? Any comments? There's a little bit of public left. If anybody has a comment, please raise your hand. Buddy, nobody? Well, you need to definitely don't go to adjourn, right?
So I move I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven forty-five, we're done. Thank you all.